All right, and I will call the meeting to order. The village council regular meeting is a March 11, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, would you call the roll, please? Cook here.
Helmut.
I am here.
Kemp.
Here.
Nikasia.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
If there's no changes on the motion, we'll put the agenda for the March 12th in front of the regular village council.
Support.
Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Nikasia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Next on our agenda are presentations, American Legion, officers or officer presentations. Please feel free to come up to the podium. Good evening.
My name is Ellen Harrington. I'm from the American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 108. I want to thank you for allowing us to show our appreciation to the Oxford Village Police Department and let them know how we appreciate their dedication and service. The American Legion Auxiliary of Oxford, Unit 108, would like to present some awards and commendations for the year 2024. Now Chief Solow will come up and hand out the awards to his officers.
Good evening, council. And thank you to the American Legion for what you guys do for us every year, for recognizing us, because we recognize you for what you've done for us. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you enough. I'm gonna set these over here for right now. It gives me great pleasure to be able to stand up here and be proud of my officers for the things that they do for us and the extra things that they do every year. They are truly extraordinary. Unfortunately, my Reserve Officer of the Year has flu A, so he can't be here today. So, I told him I would take his award on his behalf, but I'd like to read something off for Reserve Officer Ron Calvaneso. Reserve Officer Ron Calvaneso has been with the Oxford Village Police Department for over 10 years now. He has put in countless numbers of volunteer hours to serve this community. Ron dedicates himself to being available for many events in this town as throughout the year. Whether it be concerts in the park, parades, school functions, or even just helping take care, take a car in for repairs, Ron is there to help. Ron is even a DJ, so he volunteers services to our local Oxford Addison Youth Assistance to help raise money for our ballroom dance fundraiser this year. And I didn't always sum until after I left. I won't miss that. Really good. This dedication does not go unnoticed, so this was an easy choice for my 2024 Reserve Officer of the Year. Reserve Officer Ron Calvaneso, we thank you for your dedication to the Oxford Village Police Department and this community. I told him I would take a picture out the hallway and I would just put his head on mine. So, again, that's Reserve Officer Ron Calvaneso. My Officer of the Year, Brendan Westonbarger. In 2022, Brendan Westonbarger contacted me and stated that he wanted to work with the Oxford Village Police Department. Fortunately for us, we had an opening. Since day one, he hit the ground running. Brendan has a passion for children and community policing. Right away, he joined the Oxford Addison Youth Assistance Board and became a mentor and has since risen to chairperson. Officer Westonbarger also went to training to become field training officer to help, so he could help mold officers into their field. Just recently, Brendan graduated from school liaison training provided by the Michigan State Police. There, he was taught the tools to strengthen commitments to community policing and help students in a wide range of topics including basic safety, cyberbullying, and law. Officer Westonbarger volunteers to do things that most won't. This would be addressed like a dog with a cape and calling himself Safety Fun. We really appreciate it, we really do. Me too. Even if the costume is heavy and hot, chief, and the fan is broke in my head. But he still did it, he still did his thing, so we really do appreciate that. This dedication was a clear easy choice for my 2024 Officer of the Year. Officer Brendan Westonbarger, thank you for your dedication to the Oxford Village Police Department and this community.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Chief for being the boss that you are. I wouldn't be the officer that I am without you. And I'm not just saying that so you give me a raise. No, I've been doing this for just short of six years. And my chief up before up in the UP, he was a fantastic boss. And honestly, when I moved down here, I thought that would be a hard, you know, position for him to be. But you really have shined through as a leader, somebody that I can look up to, somebody that has come through as more than a boss. You really led the way for me to mold into the officer that I truly wish to become. And I can come to work knowing that I can do what I come to work to do, knowing that you support me and have my back doing that. And I know that as I go through the rest of my career here, I'll be able to come to work knowing that I'm changing lives. And not only am I doing that, but that you have my back while I do that. And I hope you know that really does mean the world to me.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
Look at these little pictures.
Thanks for joining us, guys.
You have to go for the cool part. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting the officers as well. Good to see, good to see family, children.
How are you doing?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
All right, up next on our agenda is call to the public. If anyone would like to address council this evening, please feel free to step up to the podium. Okay, no one moving. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Item seven, aid, receiving file items.
If there's no questions to make motion, you see if they have consented to that item A1 and 2.
Support. Motion by Helmut, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. And our approval items.
If there's a question for the motion to approve, consented to the items 7B, 1, 2, and 3, including the bills in the amount of $230,588.41.
Second. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Ross. A roll call vote, please.
Kemp? Yes. Nikasia?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is our unfinished or old business. First is the mass testing program, Mr. Ross.
Not a lot to update. I've sent at least one out to you guys recently. I mean, when you receive it to your end, does it come through regularly? Okay, okay. And again, I think I put $50 into that account. We've only spent about 10 testing. I looked at another system, a week or two ago, but it's much more expensive and more than we need. So, I'm probably going to stick with the one here. Again, it's kind of pay-as-you-go. What I eventually want to do, once we get it, start to roll it out, is get some more on our website. So, people can understand if they get this or if they want to opt in where to go and where the Senate forms are and stuff. So, and if they do get it, somehow, let's say a spouse or somebody else gives them the number that they understand, they can go to our site and see that it's legit and it's something that we're putting out there.
Any questions?
Is it going to be available to just the village residents or?
No, it'll be, it'll be out there to anyone. And we'll try to group them, you know, as we put them into the database for that. Because let's say we have water main break on Pontiac. A lot of people use Pontiac in the morning, right?
Yeah.
We want to put it out. So, if somebody comes from Waterstone, comes through here and goes down Pontiac every day, they might be interested in knowing that. But if there's somehow on Lakeshedge Drive, which is a dead end, we won't send it out to everybody, go try to get Lakeshedge addresses and let them know, hey, they're watering and try to isolate it that way. So, for certain things like that, that only affect a few people, then we send it out to them.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to AP, the fire protection ordinance update.
And in your packet is, I think, the ordinance that we batted around a month or two ago. And then I provided a little feedback from Councilwoman Ross back to me and some questions to help shed a little bit of light on some of the issues she brought up to help others decide on what direction we need to go. So, I don't know what kind of feedback you all might have or further questions, but I guess that's what we want to find out tonight.
So, last time we had this on our, on the agenda, I think we discussed how there's definitely a need for an updated fire ordinance. There are benefits to having it be as consistent as possible with the townships for just understandability and enforcement. But we also talked about the fact that the building properties are a lot more different than township properties as far as space concerns. And so, you know, in the draft proposed before you, there are some highlights of distance restrictions that we could consider or we can consider totally. So, kind of open it up to council, to anyone who has any thoughts. Mo, I don't think you were having any ideas.
I can almost guarantee.
So, it's probably the first time you're seeing this, so.
The only thing I have concerns with is outdoor fires. And really, bonfires within 50 feet, I don't even know why we bother allowing them within the village. You know, 50 feet. No, that's going to be vacant properties. For instance, the tronpies, other dozen. I don't know why we'd even allow a bonfire within the village.
When you say bonfires, are you talking about something that's like landscaping blocks or other?
Six feet to six feet.
Like a big open bird.
Yep. For ceremonial purposes.
Right.
Well, I don't.
That's how it's done.
If you're raising the devil and it's somebody who's dead, I don't really watch in the village either. I don't know what you mean to, I mean, bonfires. I grew up in Oxford. I know exactly when you should have a bonfire. We have them all the time. And the cops chase us and we run away. But I don't think we need to commit a bonfire.
Right.
I stand by my comments that are in the email. I do think what's presented is better. I like to be in line more with the township. I think it makes it easier since you have a fire department serving multiple municipalities. I'm just struggling with parts of it.
With distances?
The distances is actually, I mean, it's better, smaller distance for a regular fire, but I still also struggle with the enforcement aspect and then also with the recuperation. I just, I understand it's for bad actors, but I'm not, I will continue to be opposed to laws that are not always applied and that they are selectively applied. And I know it goes towards bad actors, but that's not how a law is written, so.
So, do we need to, I mean, enforcement-wise, what is the resolution in your mind?
I don't have a good answer to this. That's part of why I was asking the questions. I just, this narrows it down, I think, from 25 feet to 15 feet, completely around, so you'd have to have 30 feet from any property lines, any structure, which I guess is better for a lot of properties, but still, as I've been driving around looking at it, most people are not supposed to have fires. A fair amount of people in the village have fires. The law on the books and the new law presented still say that almost all those fires are not permissible anyway. And so, I just, I'm struggling with our current law, with the new proposed ordinance, when it's not being enforced and won't be enforced. And then the recuperation. I don't have a good answer.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, speaking of that specifically, the 15-foot, within 15-foot of a structure, so yeah, 30-foot radius, but 15-foot from your horse or a lockline even, which could be just all vacant. Would you like to see that lessen so more people are able to have fire? Or is that, that's an arbitrary line? I think there's something in the fire code about 50-foot between buildings for fires, for fire safety. I'm just wondering if that was part of this hang-up is like, well, now too many people can't, but they couldn't before either, or?
They couldn't before either.
Right.
They can still.
So.
So, is your concern the subjective analysis of when it's going to be enforced?
Yes, yes.
And I think that you heard that, you know, I don't think the police or the fire department is going to be fire pit cops running around looking for, but you're saying on their face, they're all violations.
Correct. So, I would love advice from our council. I obviously, we're all doing it, it's not enforced, but.
But it's true with a lot of, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of discretion in the, you know, we have laws on the books that aren't always, you know, enforced to the T, right? I mean, you might have broke one on the way here, you know. So. I understand your concern is that, you know, I go out and I do a fire and I'm, I'm within those distances. I get that, but somebody else doesn't.
And I don't think our fire department is going to understand the bad actors. I understand everything that was presented. I just, I really am struggling with putting something on the books that is finite, even though it's better than what we have. I will say that, I fully am in support of that when it's so subjective.
Is there anything we could do to the fire itself as opposed to the distances? In other words, limit the scope of the fire, height of the flames or, you know? So, Chief's driving by and sees a minor fires, but he sees one that's just crazy. He knows he's. Is there, is there, is there any way we could limit, we could work on the fire and not, not deter?
I think that we need to use common sense and define these minimums in here so that when something does occur, right, we do drive by and see a blaze or a bonfire.
The difference between a recreational fire says less than three feet.
Right.
Bonfire is six foot by six foot, which.
Maybe you just don't want to have bonfires at all.
And then portable outdoor fireplace, so isn't that?
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to stick to the distances in here. I mean, we all have all seen what's happened recently and it is like, let's, let's do what's right and let's keep these distances in here. And then, I mean, I think the other thing is, is common sense as well, too. Right?
Don't be bringing common sense into it.
Well, right, but that's why it's also important to have these minimums defined.
So, are you suggesting just not allow bonfires as previously allowed?
Do we even have a property that's?
There's very few of them that would meet over one acre anyway.
Might as well get rid of it. I mean, I don't know where you could do it.
Yeah.
You could do it on the Triangle, probably.
No, to build on it.
Right now.
At the west end of Park Street? You could probably do it.
But not if it isn't allowed.
Right.
Exactly.
So, there's so few instances where it could be allowed, why have it?
Yeah, and I say, let's, you know, the outdoor fireplace is literally bricks and rocks, right? I mean.
Or the portable ones, too, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not, we don't need to have huge bonfires, I don't think.
So, you're.
Maybe a special permit.
Comfortable with that three-foot diameter?
Three-foot diameter still is with, is only allowed within 25 feet.
Yeah, because that's a fire that's on the ground.
And all lot lines. So, the recreational fires, yeah, within 25 feet of a structure, but those, I don't know what the care, I'm just saying, of all lot lines, too, there's going to be a bunch of properties in the village that will not be able to have bonfire, that have, you know, landscaping rock, bonfire pits in, they just won't be able to use them. So, if we put that, and the issue is concerned is if we put that in the ordinance, we know it's happening, see the.
It's already in the ordinance, we already can't have it.
But it has never been before, so why are we?
I'm going to say, everybody on Huffy Street, on the west side of Huffy Street, can have a bonfire. They can have a bonfire.
They're not over acre, are they?
Pardon me?
Are they over acre?
Their properties are very deep.
Yeah.
They go all the way to, they meet Pontiac Street halfway through.
Yeah.
They're probably 250 feet deep, easy.
But then you also have to meet the size of your property, too.
Your 60-foot lot.
So, they would barely fit on the recreational fire, because you're 25-foot in this lot and 25-foot for that lot, you need 50-foot.
Oh, yeah.
So, that there might be, you know? So, maybe there's a way to make the recreational ones look fit with more our area. So, it's not, you know, maybe, maybe there are, and maybe that's a question for Chief as to far as why the 25 is what it is. I'm sure there's just a method to their thinking. But if it's 15-foot for on-ground and portable fire, outdoor fireplace is reasonable?
The distances dictated in the, in the code and the proposed ordinance are based off of National Fire Protection Association, Underwriters Laboratory, and the Building Code. You can't make it less. You cannot make your ordinance less than the minimum standard. Sorry. You can't say, well, the village, the village has a fall lot, so we're going to allow it in. No, you can't. You're going to put people at risk.
Right, yeah. Well, that's what, there's got to be reason. Those aren't arbitrary. So, that's what we needed to hear.
This was done by, you know, engineers and science. It's not, we didn't, we didn't pick this. We had nothing to do with this. We just will enforce the best we can when something happens.
And the, same with portable fireplace, right?
Yeah, well, the fire, the portable, the portable fire pits, they're very clearly marked when you, when you purchase them, you know, and even the kits and what have you. They tell you that you have to meet certain guidelines and distances and all of that, right? But like anything else, we're going to find out about it when you set your house on fire. And that's when it will be enforced.
That's convenient.
What am I supposed to do? I'm not driving the neighborhoods, I'm not going, you know, we're not doing that. This, this isn't animal farm, I mean, come on.
Oh, I think Oxford is animal farm, but that's Saturday.
We just want things to be safe and consistent.
So, the portable outdoor fireplace include, I'm reading the definition, but I still don't know exactly. Like the, where there's like a propane tank with a, you know, switch and a flame.
With a solar stove.
Well, you have those, you have those. You also have the wood burning ones, you have the chimneys.
The chimneys, yeah.
You know.
Most people have those on their deck.
Yeah.
And then.
And those are.
That's a problem.
And those, as long as you're doing what you're supposed to do according to the manufacturer, shouldn't be a problem either, right? They're also, they're not supposed to be on the deck. They're actually supposed to be on an elevated stand, at least 12 to, 12 to 14 inches off the deck, depending on the manufacturer. They might go as high as 16 inches, right? But they're not technically supposed to be on the deck or against the deck railing, right?
Yeah.
Right now, we already do enforce, like, anybody in the apartments. They're not, they're not allowed to have anything like that on the balcony, no matter what, right? So.
And that excludes cooking devices, though, right?
Yeah.
Well, just legally for claims, I would recommend you stick with the requirements because if you don't, and you, it can always be more restrictive, but if you're lax, you're going to have insurance liability issues.
So, Chief, the, the distances from the lot lines as well, so that is all, the lot lines as well, even if there's not structure.
The lot lines come right out of Building Code.
That's the, okay.
That's not us. I got you. That's, those are, those are all safety recommendations, again, through science and through engineering.
I have a question. On 8B, it says burning is prohibited. If it is offensive or a nuisance to smoke or a fire, like, I'm, obviously, I'm finding efforts that are causing an issue. But if what? Sorry, I'm going to rephrase my question. If smoke is a nuisance, who defines smoke as a nuisance? I mean, if my neighbors get tipped that, a very normal portable.
We have that now, yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah, especially, you get two neighbors that don't like each other. They're always, and you, Chief Solow right here, he'd tell you about all sorts of incidents where two neighbors don't get along, so they nitpick everything that they can.
Sorry, I can put it up just because my neighbor was annoyed by very normal.
If we get called, if we get called, we will come out and we evaluate, and as long as it's within, within the ordinance, you're good to go.
Generally, generally, a nuisance is when you allow something on your land to traverse the property line of another. So, whether it's ash, smoke, noise.
Odor?
It's usually when you, when your actions are going onto the next property.
The odor becomes a problem, and they start burning things that are not supposed to be burned.
Yeah, that, that's.
And that, that we will step in on at all times.
Yes.
Construction materials, garbage, waste. Yeah. Right? Not leaves.
Leaves.
Can you speak a little bit to us about the financial preparation? All of that stuff that you just presented makes sense. That helps me a lot, but in terms of. I can't find it where.
Thank you, George, for your capacity.
If you're talking about cost recovery.
Yes, thank you.
Cost recovery is going to be involved, if it turns into a structure fire where we are, we are utilizing, other communities are coming in and they're going to send us a bill, or they're going to respond and help us put out a house fire or a building fire that is, right? There's going to be cost recovery as a result of that because we're going to be charged cost recovery.
Does that currently happen?
Yes. And in place.
That's true in general, not just.
Yeah, yep.
For fire pits.
Yep. That is not something, and as a matter of fact, our, our rates that are listed in the township ordinance are actually way below what we probably should be for man, man-hours and things of that nature. It's not, you know, but again, we're not out to make money, right? It's again, trying to recruit some cost.
Is that the fine listed here? Or is that the true cost of what it would take to, the true cost of the response?
No, there's not, there's not a true cost of response, that's for sure. That's just a flat.
And is this, is it across the board? So, say there's a structure fire, you do cost recovery or is it only in terms of negligence?
We have only, we have only sought cost recovery as a result of criminal or negligent behavior. It's, it's, it's not against the ordinance to have an accident.
They never do the accident.
I have not known for a decade or so.
There was, the kind of explosion in Oregon, right? We were there, Corinne was there, there was like nine other departments there. There was no cost recovery initiated there in any way. We were there for hours, right? That's just, that's what, that's what taxes are for, right? When, when the, when the company spilled resin on M24 up near Oakwood a couple of years ago, right? We had to bring in the hazmat team, the Oakland County hazmat team. We had to bring in the hazmat team, the Oakland County hazmat team, we ended up having, uh, marine pollution control come in to help clean that up. There was a lot of cost to that, we saw cost recovery of the agency, the trucking agency, because they failed to secure the load. If it had been, if it had been secured and, right, they had an accident, that's one thing, but he literally pulled out on the M twenty-four without having strapped down a five hundred gallon tote of resin.
Nice.
So, yeah, that's negligent on their part, and so we, we, we sent them a bill, and, because we got a, a very large bill from Oakland County Hazers Materials Team. They were there for, what, six, eight hours, we were there on that day, right? But again, you know who paid it? Their insurance company.
Are, is further, uh, drafting and updates needed to those before they decide for-
Based on your comments tonight, we were gonna take one more blush on it, but, um, I think we understand.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, we weren't looking for a first reading tonight necessarily, just, we wanted to bring it back and get more key back.
We, we understood that. We wanted to make sure all seats were occupied during this conversation.
Yeah.
All right, my last question is, I understand the fire department is not gonna be out looking for this, but if for whatever reason you get called out and someone is too close to the lot line, what would be, what would be the punishment?
I can tell, I, I can tell you what we do right now.
Is there one of these calls? Okay.
Please put out the fire. Right?
So they're not gonna have to go to court or no court, right?
And we, and we, we avoid that at all costs, because then we end up having to get involved and, and, you know, we bring in the, the prosecutor. Really? It's, it's so much easier to talk nice to people and ask them, hey, here's what the ordinance says, please help, you know, help comply with that. We work with the police, in this case, it will be the police here in the village, right? And if, if, if they refuse to abide by the ordinance, then they get a ticket from the police.
Yeah, so civil infringement, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the last thing we wanna do is go there, we, we al- we will always go and, you know, try and just be friendly neighbors ourselves, right, because that's what we're here for.
Where's the cost recovery provision in the draft that promised, is it in there, or?
Yeah.
I don't see it.
It's D three, three, four.
Yeah, not a four there, and then-
That's for violations of the ordinance.
That's for the-
That's the infringement's cost.
Right, but cost recovery, the chief of justice, the justice is referring to, other jurisdictions, three?
The, yeah, the next one, the individual.
That's the-
That's the civil.
I think that's a civil infringement, like, the cost recovery for other jurisdictions are responsible, I don't see it in here.
Well, I, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know what another jurisdiction would charge us for cost recovery, right, until we have-
I know, but there's, there's nothing in here that I read that says that you can, and maybe you don't need that in here.
It's part of it, it's part of every, everything you do is subject to cost recovery.
Okay, so that's not-
Every, every action by the fire department, they can pursue cost recovery.
Yeah, and to your, on number two there, it talks about the five hundred dollars, which costs may include all expenses, you know, indirect and village, uh, has realized in connection with the violation ordered up to entry of court judgment, so I wonder if that's, but it still is capped at five hundred right there, though.
Right. I guess, I think, do you need something in an ordinance that says that you can do that, maybe you don't need that?
We don't, we don't, uh, because I've worked very closely with our attorneys from the Keller firm, uh, when we established it with the township.
Okay.
Now, in, in the township ordinance, there is a section that speaks to, uh, cost recoveries that we can charge to the communities when we're sending people, right? What it's got, kind of, to get our money back.
Right, so that's covered in the township ordinance, it would be the village, wow.
I, I think, if, if I may, sorry to interrupt, um, there was additional cost recovery section behind this one that we didn't, I didn't include, because that wasn't, we're trying, I was trying to nail down a fire portion, but there is a, a section in that, in that was included with this, it's like a separate section.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that will be part of the ordinance?
That, yeah, so that one, they didn't bring that, yeah, I do, I always kind of work through this part first.
It's the same as the police, we, we get cost recovery on certain things that the police respond to.
Right, no, I understand, I set up it needed to be part of the ordinance, I think it is.
It is, there is, there's a whole other section after all this, that was, into that, and it talked about, it was the township ordinance, right?
Right.
So I didn't get into that part, and I was focusing on this section, because this section is the one that replaces our section, almost near and there. The other section is almost like a new section that ours didn't have, or may have had elsewhere, so, yeah, we'll have to include that, and bring that together as well, there, there's a separate section.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So we can bring it back one more time.
Yeah.
So the next time would be for a first reading?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So council agrees, I think the next one, I think it's your first reading on it as is, unless we have any other changes.
I'd like to give on my own.
Jay Bonfire out.
Makes sense, again.
Prohibited in the village, right?
Uh, it's impossible.
Well, yeah, it's-
It's prohibited because it's impossible.
Uh, we're gonna-
It's not impossible.
No, it's, it's possible, I'm going to go to Matt Don's yard tonight, he's not healthy.
Yeah. Well, I think we should explicitly say it's prohibited, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion, right?
No, that's fine.
Just bring it back, that's, okay.
No.
I got XDA already right here, so.
Okay, anything else from council on this item before we move on to it? Um, next is proposed resolution twenty-five oh two, Jordan White Eastman.
Yep, and council members, that's what I gave you tonight, because I had a lot of stuff done, but it overlooks the, uh, legal description for the center line, it was still an old resolution from Scripter Court, so that's what the new resolution I put in front of you tonight was, for eight C, it has the proper center line description. And again, this is something we brought to you last summer, uh, we were gonna get with the developer of the villagers condos, and they could have, uh, granted us the easement, we had Bob did the paperwork, we got it to them, then they, they pilled around for months, and then towards the end of the year, they decided that they would rather do the final transfer, de-transfer to the Village Condo, Village Condo Association and let them grant us the easement, so then we had to wait for that transaction. It all finally took place, we finally got it together and had the condo association sign it, and took it to the county, and I have to get, I'll have a resolution. This resolution will take care of it, so I can get it to MDOT by April, I think nineteenth is the deadline, for it to go into our new MDOT list of streets.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Who wrote the writing, who wrote the-
Kennedy surveying, it all, that, I just copied and pasted his center line description out, which is-
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt, um, resolution twenty-five oh two, as presented with updated, uh, center line description.
Support.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Nicosia, any discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call vote please, Nicosia?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Homel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Motion carries, the resolution's adopted. Next is Oxford Lake Drive budgeted, Haging project update.
So again, I tried to, you know, catch it a little bit, I know it actually wasn't here last year's budget, but we did talk about this, and as we do many of these projects around for the water mains, um, it's forcing us to go down those streets, but we, we can't take our eye off the very much falling apart Oxford Lake Drive over there, and so we did put some money, we just threw some money in last year, not knowing when we're gonna get to it and what those costs might be. Um, I've since been talking to Roll a little bit about how best to do it, there's curb, it's curd streets, so it would be a milling or a crush and shape process, it won't be, be a little different than on Park Street or where, and stuff like that. Um, first thing we'll wanna do is get some core samples done, um, this will be something that will take off in the next fiscal year, starting July one. But still, I want to get on the radar that we had already talked about this, last year we plugged in a little bit of money, um, for it, it probably won't be enough, but we can, we won't spend that in this budget, we'll roll that forward, perhaps in our budget talks, and keep this on our radar. And off, and then, and as I noted on the aerial there, there's two sections over on Woodley Way that are real, really bad, that we can't go do this without, uh, doing them at the same time. And at least one of them, the intersection of Lake and Maines, will be a full debt, because it's just so bad, we can't mill anything off. And we may find that the whole length of Oc- Oc- Lake Drive is more of a crush and place and reshape versus the milling, that we, we don't wanna mill off two inches, it's only three and a half inches there. We don't know what is there, because we didn't build the street. So, just wanna kind of set that radar, remind everyone that was in our budget, and we'll continue to work on that for this, end of summer, hopefully, project.
Uh, yes, um, the map, um, why does it stop and not go all the way through, is that the newer part of this?
That's where we get the turns in much better shape at that point.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, we could continue all the way to Thornhill Drive, which is the one that goes east and west there, and the north end of that, but it's night and day difference right around for that home, yeah. It's not like, it's not like new there, but it, it is nothing like from that red line south.
Okay.
And part of the thing that did come up, and speaking of Roll recently, you know, we, we crossed the street, one, two, three, four, I think there's six or seven spots where, that we cross intersections, where there's ADA ramping there, that we will, as long as we're going through there, we'll have to make sure that those are, um, up to standards. Someone went through, could place that, just the corner flag and put the, uh, the little bumps in place, I call them, whatever they are, the ADA ramp.
Wouldn't we get added three hundred feet short of, toward the trail?
I think so.
I mean, we should probably just get a price on it for the-
That was, that was my original thought, and, and, you know, why not end it at an intersection, there, there was a solid break line right there, but by all means, we can.
Yeah, at least a swag for budgeting purposes.
So, we did just receive more, uh, marijuana money than we thought, so I think that we could be able to, as we go to budgeting, allocate some of that.
Well, I might burst that bubble a little bit later at the end, I may, maybe.
Let me have a moment.
You can enjoy your moment.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, I guess, would any of the, the funding or grants from last year, would any, are those opportunities still?
No, the MDOT, um, transportation grant we got for Moyer Street is the, sometimes you apply for those six, eight years before you get one, so our second year, I think, was planned, we got one. We're pretty surprised, I wouldn't expect another one on the short horizon, um, and really, that's about all there is, and that one, we scored pretty well, because we're doing it along with ADA ramping, maybe any sewer repairs, and definitely new water main project tomorrow. Overlap and different, uh, infrastructure we have, it scored better for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, um, proposed resolution for the renewal of five-year IT agreement with Oakland County.
And again, this is the, uh, contracts that I emailed everybody, and so if you don't have a printed version, it's in, it's in our online version. Um, Mr. Davis is totally aware of the, the county, and Kelsey as well, probably, we're, the biggest thing that we use it for, I think, is, is the police department, the Clemis, the, uh, court law enforcement management information system for all the police reporting and stuff. We also have the bill paying for taxes and stuff through the county, but for the most part, it's the Clemis program and then connectivity we have with them that really we rely on.
Um, I guess the question is on that, do we need a vote on that?
Yeah, we need to adopt the resolution, and then we'll get the signatures on the agreement and get it to them.
So that's a five-year term, right, too?
I believe so.
On, and there's no way to make that shorter?
It, it usually goes in five-year increments, but if there's a change in services, they, they, uh, they will issue a new change, um, document, we've seen that before. These, the county tends to run these in five years, and they stick pretty close to their guns on the contract language, and I give everybody who read the whole thing a star, um, uh, we, we, we could go back and ask for a few word changes, I'll say no. It's, you know, this is something we've renewed in the past.
I'll make a motion to add to resolution twenty-five oh three, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Helmuth, any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote please, Helmuth?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Nicosia?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution's adopted. Next, under new business is the DDA member expirations and appointments.
Um, yep, you have, uh, renewal of Marie Powers, is, is she still in place, even though her term expired at the end of twenty twenty-four, because the statute states they remain in place until their successor is appointed? I think that was planned, at the hearing back, that she was interested in continuing and all. Um, then you still have the other one, that was Catherine Colvin's location, uh, membership, that expired at the end of the year too, but I don't think we have anybody, I haven't seen the applications come across mine this year.
Right, so from my understanding, there is still, um, like Mr. Roder just said, so we have one vacancy on the DDA. Typically, Catherine Colvin would have been substituted with Rod Charles, as both, they're both township trustees, but since Mr. Charles also is a property owner in the district, he qualifies for the district building owner spot and the township board's recommendation, so it leaves us with that empty spot. Uh, yeah, Kimberly did let me know Marie is, um, still interested in continuing to serve, and I think she does an excellent job, so, um, I would move to, um, reappoint Marie Powers to another term on the DDA board, um, and I think that's a four-year, four-year term, so, okay, twenty twenty-eight.
Yep.
Support.
Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Nicosia, um, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you name, motion carries, so we have Marie, and then, um, I'm just looking to fill that spot, so Kimberly Jess, if you find anyone, let us know, if anyone has any recommendations or interest in serving on the DDA board. This would be a member-at-large position, right, so it really could be anyone who's interested, which is nice, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We have our requirements met for those with an interest at this point.
So, that's a good spot to be in, so. Um, anyone from council have anything else on this topic before we move on? All right, um, next is the, um, DDA executive director update for twenty twenty-five.
Hello, and thank you, this is actually an error in the agenda, but we're taking the opportunity to introduce Jess, who is the new, um, admin and promotions coordinator. Um, so this, uh, session will be later this year in the fall, sometime around October, just kind of an update of what we've been doing all year, but again, we're gonna sneak in and take it anyway.
So if I haven't met you already, my name's Jess, um, yep, and I'm the admin and promotions coordinator for the DDA. I've been home with my kids for a little bit, but prior to that, for ten years, I worked in a very similar position at, um, in the Netflix Center in California. So I did events and digital promotions for them, so, let's write my notes. Any questions?
Welcome. To Tora.
Oh, oh, I already told her that. I remind her daily.
Most could be me, you, just ready to-
No, she would, actually, she's like, she is so funny. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Run away, run away.
Uh, okay, next is the South Washington Triangle Brownfield Tiff discussion.
Yep, and Mr. Davis did, uh, prepare a memo, I didn't include in the packet, my apologies, Bob reminded me of it tonight, so you have it in, in front of you tonight, now, we aren't looking to make any adoptions or decisions, Mr. Davis, it's more of explaining and, um, hearing from the developers who are here, Mr. Nixon, and, and, I'm sorry.
If you have any questions, you would, uh, people weren't happy to answer, but more or less, just introduce it.
But, and a memo that they put together and shared with me a week, a couple of weeks ago, I think I was, I sent up, um, something to you, council yesterday, about the Michigan Planning Association, Michigan Association of Planning has an upcoming, uh, informational webinar and stuff about that, and I thought, their, their flyer loans said a lot of it. How we all talk about planning and zoning and site plans and all this stuff and density, and not a lot of thought or is given to the financing and how it actually works. And so there's some of those classes that they're putting out, um, and I learned about this, I went to a seminar, New Michigan Associate of Planning, last December, and a lot of the test, uh, examples of stuff are on the west side and around Michigan that have already taken place, the MISTAs involved. They kinda aim for, and then, and one of the questions put out there that kinda sums it up is, someone says, why aren't there any two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes for sale, new homes? And the answer is, because they cost two hundred and eighty thousand a bill. So, people then end up building much larger ones, because there's more room for, uh, profitability, I guess, the bigger you build. And so there's this problem across the whole state that they call the messy middle, right, the lonkens kinda taking care of it, the high people are taking care of it, the middle is a problem, and, um, why they stuck this new Tiff, uh, option in Brownfield, I'm not sure, but they found that's where it works, uh, they plugged it in. Uh, Bob's memo speaks to the lot about that in the statute. It, it enables, they look at it as a way to, hey, the project's not gonna be built, other than that's perhaps at times, you know, with the financing, the way it is, the rates, the way they are, especially today. It's an avenue for, uh, to consider or to help feed, finalize some of those tax monies through the Tiff, which is similar to a DDA Tiff, back to the developer for a set number of years to make the financing work, that makes the banks realize it's gonna work and gets it off the ground. Now, we're unique, not being a city or township, because the villages we have overlap, any approvals done here would also have to be approved at the township. Um, it's not, we can do ours, and they don't do theirs, it would have to be both communities would have to approve it.
This was a, this was a great idea, bad rollout, you know, by the state of Michigan, in my opinion, maybe put it in the wrong spot, thank you guys for knowing about it. Um, it wasn't something that jumped out, um, across the state, but it's a great idea because what, what, what you're used to on Brownfield is you have a contaminated piece of property. We, we use some money to get rid of the contamination so we can do the development and the TIF, the tax incremental finance growth on the project phase back, the, um, the remediation and then everybody has a nice new development. This is the same concept, um, but there's no contamination involved, this is just, this is just why, why can't we get a, why can't a, a starter own the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And, and like Joe said, because we can't build it for that, so this, this TIF bridges the gap. It has a lot of, when you read my memo, you get, oh, there's a lot going on and it's very confusing, but if you remember the concept as you're reading, it should make some sense to you. You're looking for certain income brackets and certain financial brackets, um, to get people to qualify and then, and then you essentially use the, the incremental growth in the, in the taxation to, to pay back. The developer who had the supplemental win in order to get the house into the ground. So, when you read it, read it with that in mind and, um, it, it, it's, it's a form of getting affordable housing, you know, in, into the, into the communities. It's not low-income housing, it's just, it's just trying to bridge the gap between, wow, we just got married, let's get a starter home, it's four eighty, you know, and, um, there's, there's, there's nothing for two fifty. And so we're, they're trying, the state is trying to bridge that gap.
Yeah, the, the target, um, demographic is the eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent of their median household income of the community in which the development's going.
Is it standard for fifteen years?
I don't believe so.
It's always low, we're up to thirty.
Five minimum?
I think five, seven, seven or five is the minimum, I'm not sure, um, relatively due to this, this.
Oh, it's, yes.
But, um, our attorney is very familiar with it and, um, you know, to get the banks to recognize it when you're trying to get lending, you have to get it for a certain number of years. And, um, the bank that, uh, we, are working with to be lending on this project, like, sit for fifteen years before they'll, they'll count it. So, the MISTA TIF allows for up to thirty, we don't feel we need thirty years, but we need to get it so it's recognized because there's all these lending parameters and as Joe mentioned, it, it makes it so that the project becomes lendable. And, um, that's why we're seeking the, seeking the.
Fifteen is a good one.
Yeah.
Thank you, that was helpful.
So I need to read through Bob's memo, um, it was just put in front of us today, but do you have an idea of how the condos are gonna be priced or arranged?
You know, uh, I, I don't know what the pricing will be on as far as, uh, market price on those, I mean, I'd say they'd be market price and be geared towards somewhere in that eighty to one hundred and twenty percent. You have to commit, you have to commit under the, under the TIF Act, you have to commit a certain percentage of them, so whatever that incentive is and, and that TIF benefit that you need in order to make your lending criteria. You have to commit that percentage to get there, so, yeah, that's kinda all laid out for you, you know, I wish I could give you a definite.
And in, and in some cases, even though they might be condominiums, um, some of them might just be rental units for a while because that benefits the, the project better.
And that helps the lending as well.
It, it, it is very difficult to, 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 to finance them individually, it's much easier to finance them as rentals going in and then you could put their condos, they can sell them individually after.
It's a great, great idea, great concept.
Do you know what the timeline is as far as like, looks like, so you'll be waiting, you'll get approval through Oakland County's Brownfield redevelopment authority and then bring something to the village and to the township, is that acceptable?
We have to create a.
And then there's a lot you have to do.
Okay.
There's a lot.
So it's a, it's a whole process, okay.
Well, what we didn't wanna do is, we didn't wanna go to Oakland County and go and do all of that and then have a drop on the village and the, in the township and be the first time you ever heard of it. So, we, we wanted to make sure that the, both the village, we started with the village because the properties in the village and, you know, um, we worked with the, the commission here to get the conditional rezoning and all of that. So we started with the village and, um, next would be the township and then, um, after that, we would, we would do a review plan with the, with the county.
Okay.
There's a, uh, I forgot the gentleman's name at the county that, that you worked with on this, with our attorney, Brian?
Yeah.
Brian, yeah, there's a, there's a person that you work with and you put all, all of this together.
And I love the idea of having this kind of median income, um, housing available and, I'm sorry, because we really don't, I mean, the prices today are.
It's clearly the two hundred and fifty.
I know, that's scary.
That is, that's true.
But at least that, yeah, let's, yeah, people trying to buy, you know, a first home or their second or third even, got a chance of living in Oxford, so, um, I know there's not much on the market and.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
The two to three hundred thousand price range, that's for sure, so, okay, any questions from council?
I think next steps would be that we work on putting a formal proposal together and we submit that to maybe Joe and Bob to bring back to the council.
Let them up or something.
And, uh, and, uh, you know, we can, we can.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Okay, right, we'll do that.
The one, the one flying to I M S C is going forward is our, our conditional zoning that are timely and this could stretch that a little bit, so we'll have to address that as it comes towards that. If.
We feel confident that if we get through all of our approvals, that we can.
Well, we have a lot in our, we have to create the Brownfield redevelopment district, and you have to put members down there, district and things like that, so this is work on our end.
A little bored, we gotta. So, there's no opinions in my, um, memo to you, it's just very law and fact basis. I don't have a problem if the, if the council is willing to waive the privilege of that communication and allow them to read it so they can share it with their lawyer, make sure we're on the same page.
Sure.
As to how this thing is structured, if you don't mind if we gave them.
If we could get our attorney in touch.
Yeah, who's that?
His name is Jared Belka, he's from, uh, Warner, from across.
Warner and Orcross and Judd, right.
Yeah, he's, he's, uh, very familiar.
Yeah, he's a good guy, I know him.
Do you know him?
Yep.
Yeah, I know him from, um, with the sharing.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try to send you on your way with a copy.
I can mail it to you.
Okay.
Or you know to, and then you, make sure we're all on the same page.
All right, thank you.
Any, may I, may I ask from council?
No.
Okay, great, we look forward to.
Yeah, um, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, bye, David.
Yeah. See you later.
Take care, guys.
All right, now he is the, um, proposed special event application for the Rock Walk.
Uh, yes, council, you have it in your packet, um, I can't remember how long ago, it's maybe four or five years ago, maybe even before the whole pandemic stuff. We had, um, a, a rock walk took place and they were walking from City of Lapeer to Lake Orion or even further south, it was like a.
I remember that.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, even leaving that day where I was seeing they're still walking in, all they did is they used Sentinel Park as a pit stop. So, I think it may have been reported down there and tables of gatorade and water for them to sit down for a minute and then continue walking. This is similar, but the Sentinel Park would be the starting point. Um, and my only concern, and they're gonna, they're going to, I think, veterans, uh, when they're all down by Starbucks, so a little bit less, so more people could perhaps get involved. It's not, can be a twenty mile walk, um, and, uh, my only concern was parking and, and he's aware, I, you know, when people use the old, uh, Sentinel for, for special events, we ask that they park over here in our village lot as much as possible. And he's got that information and he'll do his best to make sure that happens because they, they start here in the morning and take off, we don't want their cars plugging up our business lot so much.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And you, you, you will notice he did sign about, um, it, it's a young, it's a man who walked by himself, he doesn't have an association or proof of insurance or things like that, he's just doing this. So, he didn't have the, uh, deposit or the liability insurance fee, he did ask for that waiver to be granted. See on that on page two.
Actually, we're gonna have a motion.
I was, sorry. I will make a motion to approve special event application twenty-five oh four, presented.
Might close the waiver, but, uh, got it. Support, motion made by Ross, seconded by Ken, any discussion?
Um, I guess the only, I gotta ask this question, um, are we concerned that the walk, i- is the walk gonna be down Pollyan Trail somehow?
Right down at twenty-four.
Right down.
So are we concerned about the, the waiver for, uh, liability, would we have?
I think for the most part, that's when they're on our premises and our, our property.
Yeah, we're not. Our insurance covers our property, that's, we're, we're waiving them from having that, have insurance to be on our land.
Okay. Okay.
Council, the Sentinel Park, there's.
Once they leave, we're.
All right, um, any further questions? Hearing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries, approved. Um, next is the request for funds, uh, from the Lone Ranger Fund for a bronze marker.
Hey, council, um, Mr. Conacki was here and I provided the letter, the request from him, um, a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, filling out what he is asking me to question.
Good evening, council, uh, to those who don't know me, I'm CJ Conacki, I'm the Township's Communications and Grants Manager. And, um, for a little bit of background, back in January, uh, I'm very passionate about local history, so back in January, I, um, launched a historical marker program through the township. And basically, um, looked at about sixteen to eighteen sites where I'm looking to put boulders with bronze plaques on them, sixteen inches by twenty inch. Commemorating significant people, places, structures and events, uh, significant terms of Oxford's history. And, um, the boulders are all gonna be donated by the Edward C. Levy Company and Caning Materials, and they'll be placed there by Sarah Dan Construction. And then the bronze plaques is what I'm currently seeking, uh, funding for, um, is a combination of donations and grants, um, to fund this part. And we've already, uh, secured funding for the first two plaques, uh, the Levy Company has graciously also donated to, uh, donated the money for the first plaque, which is gonna be the Ty Cobb plaque. Which is gonna be unveiled on April fourth, which is the Tigers' home opener at Stony Lake Park, uh, for those of you who are not aware. Ty Cobb, uh, mature Tigers Hall of Famer, he used to come up here and fish, he did so for about a decade, he fished at Stony Lake and other local lakes. And he also played on the towns, we had a town baseball team back then and he played in at least three games in an Oxford uniform, and he became a familiar figure on the street. So I thought this was a, a perfect way to kick off this program. Uh, Michigan Aggregates Association, they agreed to fund us the second plaque for William O. Smith, he was the man who pioneered the gravel industry in Oxford, opened the first gravel pit here in nineteen twelve. That's gonna go around, uh, Pollyan Trail along Lakeville Road. But I'm coming here tonight, uh, requesting funds for one of the pla- all the plaques, by the way, they cost three thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars each. I'm requesting council use some of the funds that were, uh, been sitting in account for I don't know how many years to build the Lone Ranger statue. To do a bronze plaque at the Drainer-Polyon Trail intersection honoring Bryce Beamer, who was the radio voice of Lone Ranger from nineteen forty-one to fifty-four. And he lived here in Oxford on West Drainer Road from nineteen forty-two to sixty-five, so I thought this would be a perfect place for the marker. Um, perfect opportunity to use these funds that have been sitting there for all these years, and I'm asking you tonight to please help fund this marker.
Thank you. Any questions, Chris, Peter?
I have comments.
Sure.
Okay. Um, one, I love history, I give it back, so I wanted to give a little background from our end, from the DDA perspective, um, as well as from the village perspective. So, in January, we were at the DDA going to launch an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc home and history committee. The DDA recognized that we don't formally do much with the history element of our mission and our vision. Unfortunately, I had the loop and we did not have a forum. I believe at that time Rod Charles had brought up this project to you as well, CJ, and so while I'm happy that you have gone and done this, I have all for the better for Oxford. Um, from home and history standpoint, we are now official ad hoc committee of the DDA, it is time mended. The purpose of the committee is for the Village One Hundred and Fifty, which is next year, as well as to help support America Two Hundred and Fifty. From our end, we are still building our committee, um, but we have started meeting and we have a list of projects that we will hopefully accomplish and complete by the end of next year. Again, being time mended, I know Kimberly, I'm sorry, because we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, so this, some of this is new to you as well, but it's in our report for next week. Including historical digactics downtown, historical state markers, historical mural downtown, historic places tours, um, potentially a new film. And then also, we're making a recommendation to the DDA to rethink some of our facade grants to help with more, um, historical elements like top lighting. So, I say all of that because when these funds are being requested, I know that the Home and History Committee through the DDA is also going to be requesting those funds. And I had asked, um, I had sent an email asking if, what the stipulations were specifically for those funds, I don't know if we had an answer.
Bob's been doing some research, um, I know Mo had some thoughts on it, or today we talked, um, I did share with you folks, I think, the email, the Michigan Memorial Application, I think they were done, Michigan Memorial Fund. About the statute in Sentinel Park, where it was going, there was a committee, uh, I think it was Mr. Arrowhead was the village manager at the time. Uh, and all the due diligence they had already done to try to, uh, they had mockups of the statute, included the horse and everything, if I recall. That's what I found readily available and I know Bob was gonna do some digging, just to see what your options are.
Yeah, that, that seems to be, and CJ, you may have some memory of this because your memory is usually pretty good, is that, um, money came in under the umbrella that it would be used for a statue, um, in your park. So the money came into the village of Oxford, right, point number one, and it came in for generally, not a specific location in your park, but to be in your park. But it was for a statue that I don't think the current money could fund, um, or might ever fund. Um, but those are the loose strings that we were able to piece together over time, is that the money came to the village for a project in the village, particularly in the park. You know, legally, I always like to stick to how the money got here and, and the purpose of the money. Um, I think, I don't, I don't think that a boulder with a, with a plaque on it, I think, would be okay for the statute purpose.
So the DDA, um, the Home and History Committee will be recommending, if it's permitted, that we, uh, pursue a formal historical state marker using those funds if the funding permits it.
Let me just say that there's seven thousand, give or take a few dollars, like seven thousand eight perhaps, in the fund. Just in case everyone didn't know.
If I could ask for a marker for what?
For the Lone Ranger, sorry, specifically talking for the Lone Ranger to actually have a State of Michigan historical marker.
I guess I would just argue that I think West Drainer is more appropriate because Bryce Beamer's ties to the township, not downtown Oxford. And he lived on Way Str- West Drainer, this marker wouldn't be far from the house, so I think, I mean, from my perspective, it's more appropriate for, for them, I'm not saying we couldn't do both.
Well, I also think that we're also seeking permission from the residents that currently are on those, uh, the two Beamer properties to put a state marker there. So, that's, these are part of discussions to have because I know it's held within the village, so does the state marker then go or serve to the properties, whether that's the Pollyan Trail, the Beamer properties? Or because it would be in the park, which the park, outside of it being Oxford and that we hold the funds, I agree with you in that, is that it's.
Well, I wasn't aware that you're looking to put on, I, I just don't, I guess I don't quite understand how the village committee and the DDA committee is looking to put a sign on township or, or outside. I mean, we're still talking about spending.
Well, the funds are for Lone Ranger.
Right, it's for, we're, you know, I get that, so that's what I was just trying to.
And the board holds money, so the village is trying to decide.
So this is the first, this hasn't been shared with me.
Correct, we didn't have a chance to share because you went ahead and did that wrong.
Right.
Hi, Mo. I'd like to say I have every intention of going to the basement on Monday and looking at your own stall maker, I, I know the people who put money in. I know the files are down there somewhere and I don't come back.
I think the last, the last time, the last time we, you know, we tied her up too, Mo.
I think that would help to make sure that we're using.
Because you know, it was very crazy, believe it or not, it was not here in nineteen seventy-six, it was like the next week. But there's, they looked into it before, using this money when they were gonna paint the bra on the water tower. Supposed to be the mask, look down. It was supposed to be the mask, look down. So I, I know there's stuff in the basement, and I know none of you have been here, and it's fine, I'll go look for it, and then maybe I'll get some information that can help.
Well, well, what we do know, Mo, is that the money made its way to the village.
Yes.
We do know that, so I, I would, I would think you're gonna find some documentation that put the money from some hand to the village for a purpose in the park.
Exactly.
And is there any, is, is there any thought that we could do this that way?
I wouldn't think so, only because it's outside, if they wanted to put it somewhere else in the village, you could maybe come up with an argument for that. But I don't know.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if the money that came into the village for a purpose, we should use outside the village.
I don't either, and I don't know how anything was written, I don't know. I, I don't know, but I know that his neighbor worked down there, cause we went through this. Maybe oh two, why weren't they gonna paint the water, do, do you remember the water tower was broken, how terrible it looked?
That was before, I think.
Um, I, I'll find it, I know the names.
Certainly, Mo, do you think we could go down there now and take a look around?
Yeah, the meeting's got, what, ten minutes, I could bring that.
No, I, I.
His soul's office open.
I just, I just think we have to be careful, because it's in your account, you have your turf. We just, I, I wouldn't be quick to authorize money to be out of your community.
I agree.
And you're not quick to wanna put it in our community. So we have, we have to, we have to decide on this.
I really feel like there's some worrying in there, that we have to be very careful how we spend that money. And I don't think we can just, I'm even sure we can spend it for a rock.
Well, and, and see, if, I would prefer a historical state marker. And once we know the parameters of how that goes, if it has to be in the park, we are sitting on approximately seven thousand dollars that there's very limited options on what we can do with seven thousand dollars, we can't do the statue, right, like that's just not.
It's not, it's not gonna happen, right.
What can we do that fits the requirements and the parameters? And then also, you know, make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs here.
I, I.
I think the idea, Mo, if, if there are, I mean, I'd like to know the original intent and be sure, but like you're saying, because we should follow that, supposedly it's possible. And if that intent is impossible, to the amount of funds, then we can try to, you know, figure out the best purpose thereafter.
I'll be here once. So, well, what time can you open your eyes? Let me get your own mind.
I'll let you know.
I'll be here.
I'll let you know. Getting the money needs to, I mean, if, if it's a rock, the rock being still in the village.
Yeah, I mean, unless it's, I mean, I guess.
A hedge?
Well, no, I, I think it depends on what the intention is and the donation, so, but yeah, there's, there could be a reason why it's in the village or there.
I didn't think they were donations, I think they were investments.
Mm-hmm.
Where the people that money paid for making that investment. But it's been fifty years, I don't remember.
Yeah.
But there were fundraisers in that house, there were donations, and there were fundraisers at times, cause they did it up at where Calaway's was.
Yeah.
They had a big fundraiser out there.
It was.
Early eighties.
The one.
No, our lack of, I missed it, so.
And I'm in favor of the historical marker, you know, Ashley's proposing personally, if it's in line with how we can use the funds, just because it will bring people to Oxford, you know, specifically for.
I think there's a lot of people that do tourism based on historic markers. Um, while I think the historical marker program that you're doing is fabulous too, I just think with the village and with what we're trying to accomplish, one, let's find out how money's supposed to be spent, and it would be my preferences with the committee as well, to do a formal historical state marker application specifically for the Lone Ranger, that way we know the funds are at least meeting one of the criteria.
Right.
Um, the state marker might not take up all seven thousand dollars, but, um, I don't think that there's going to be enough to do the state marker and the whole one.
Okay. Something, and we just don't make a decision tonight, um, CJ's request until we find out some more information.
We can put around April two.
Well, thanks for listening.
Yeah. Thanks for your time, CJ.
I'll let you know when it's.
Alright, um, now I'm G, special application for stretch in the park.
This is our new DDA member, Jay Choi, who, um, has, has a location, uh, fifty-three south. And, uh, his first foray at doing a special event application, so he was, uh, right on it, got us everything we needed for it, so, now. Yeah, well, a lower long guided stretch class posted in the park for all ages.
It's not yoga, it's just stretching.
Now, he has also signed the request for the, uh, waiver, liability, and insurance. Which, I wasn't here when he dropped it off, but then he did send in an, an insurance thing a little later, and then I went to open it, it was blank, so I gotta get back to him on that. It came from Set Farm Bureau, whatever, or farmers, and it was PDF open and it was a blank thing. Uh, it was right formed, but it was blank, so.
So does, the insurance would cover basically if someone was injured in the park from doing stretching?
Yep.
If they overstretch them.
Well, at least, like anything else, they, they walk on a zeeble and they twist around.
Okay.
We're on our property.
Yeah.
There's something about our property insurance, though.
Right.
Not necessarily.
But not what they're doing on our property, but our property.
Our property.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and again, and, um, so again, he signed that for the waiver, he's got the deposit, but then his insurance did come through, so I just gotta clear.
You do have it.
Yeah, well, I have something that claims it's insurance. Doesn't show up in the insurance.
Could approve it subject to the insurance.
Okay. Yeah, do you find that that insurance is necessary, so that we should not approve it if we don't have that?
This one been on here for, for a long period of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple hours, yep.
So you can approve it, subject to receiving that.
I'll make a motion to approve special amount application, twenty-five oh five, subject to, um, receiving the insurance.
Support.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Nina. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? Motion carries. Number tens, nothing, eleven, public comments, second chance. Committee reports, um, Noda?
I've been awful, Joe's been going for me. I don't get there all day.
Yeah, we had a meeting and a special meeting, so, um, in the special meeting, we didn't start for an hour and twenty minutes waiting for a quorum to do in the special meeting, cause you can't disclose this. Simple quorum, right, it's a two-thirds majority there.
I'm sorry.
So, but that's okay, I was already there, you're back. So, and, and while I was there, again, I'm not a, not a member, or I'm not the alternate, because both of those in the agreement are required to be council members or township board members.
That's right.
They do have three voting members that are non-governmental members, but up until recently, they have all been still. Uh, but while we were there that day, I explained it to them when I first got there, and I had the agreement with me, their attorney was there, and I said, you know, you have, if you do have an opening, Lynn, uh, the director said, yes, they have an opening on a, as one of the third non-voting members. And so that morning, they appointed me as one of the third non-voting members, cause they needed me for a quorum.
God, it smells.
So I am not your alternate, you, you're still able to have an alternate governmental member from this board, but.
You will, and I'm being nervous.
But I did note that, uh, when the meetings happen during the months of golf season, I leave about an hour, and, uh, usually an hour before the meeting starts. So I'm hoping.
I'm taking the hint, I get it.
Hoping that she's around.
I have to start a new job next month, so I'll be around closer, so.
So, again, uh, it's important, they have a lot going on, they, they've exploded in growth, their, their services. Uh, because they're getting funding now through Smart and the county, they're servicing, uh, Independence Township and another township over that way, and they've got, they went from like twenty-five or thirteen drivers to like fifty-seven drivers, and they went from, you know, thirty employees to like a hundred employees, they've really grown a lot with additional funds and additional things. So they're having some growing pains with stacking and stuff like that, but, uh, they're doing their best to recalibrate and stay on it, and will still offer their great service. Don't know how long they're gonna continue to, um, they have the whole building now in South Glasby, where, when they first bought it, they had a tenant in the back, because they had a, an existing lease for a few years, they were able to work a deal out and those tenant, that tenant, uh, moved on, and so they have the whole building now, that helps. But with their growth, they're still gonna, who knows, in a couple, in a year or two, they might be having to find additional space.
Thank you. Uh, any commission and cable commission?
I'd like to take a point, probably, they had enough as to plan a commission meeting. Also, technically, I'm just a cable with commission meeting, cause they have, because a lot of people kind of know. However, they are working on, I can't remember the right phrase for this, they're multi-jurisdiction contract. They'll be giving that out to Joe probably the next week or so. Um, it's gotta go to all four communities for approval. So I'm sure Terry will be in the meeting, I'll be discussing that. It's basically the same as five or ten years ago, whenever we did it. Um, but there is some additional worrying as far as when a community falls behind in their payments, which is a couple things we've been bronze with, but everybody's up to date now, so we're hoping to get the, take care of.
Madam Chair, may I piggyback on that a little bit? So at our, uh, leadership meeting, you know, the monthly leadership meeting, we had, uh, and Terry, of course, was there for, Bella, she just got back on her feet, um, after some bouts or some health issues, um, that brought up a little bit the discussion about the pay fees and things like that, and, you know, the village council was at last year, the year before, I think last year, we went from a fifty percent collect, and then, and then we went to seventy-five.
Hmm.
Um, they're, they're really struggling, and they were hoping that there would be consideration of going to the full hundred percent this year in our budget. So I'll bring it up now, we aren't in a budget talks yet, but, um, that, that was a wish on their list. And, uh, it also, her and the new Dr. Milligan, the new superintendent, um, I pointed out to them how where I lived, though, the school is well-involved, and they provide and, uh, the, the studios and stuff are at the school, and so there's a, there's an opportunity there for them, perhaps, to get with the schools and, um, share some resources. So maybe help in the long run with cable commission, what will come of that, I don't know, but they were both interested, been looking into that, down at Avenue to see. Cause, you know, they built that new building out there, and they have stuff, so they have, they're at overhead, then perhaps they can shed some of their overhead in the future, they work with the schools.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you. Alright, um, DDA, Jake?
Um, I think we've already had a couple of updates, uh, no major, no major updates, um, short of, I, unless there's something major that you would like to, uh.
I don't recall anything major from our last meeting.
Other than, other than.
That was three weeks ago.
New team, new team member, yeah. Ashley, did you have anything to add?
Not any more than one of ours, I think.
So I prefer, I think we're all covered there.
Alright, thank you. Pollyand Trail?
Um, I, I don't think I made the last meeting, cause I was out of town.
Okay.
I don't remember right, I don't remember the one.
I think it was off closed session, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then the, I assume the ZVA is not mad?
Correct.
We're doing good.
I didn't want to throw any dinner.
You're not on the ZVA. Oh, yeah, you're a member.
I'm, I'm on ZVA.
Alright, uh, manager, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your report.
Alright, Robert, here's your thing. Um, so, I started the Johnson notes down a few days ago, and I, and I ended up with this whole sheet that I put in front of you tonight, so as I talk about them, you can at least follow and reference them later if I go through them quickly. Moyer Street project, again, we're gonna handle it the same as Conack, uh, I think it's this week, perhaps, that the, uh, Dependable Sewer's gonna come down on camera, the sewer main and stuff, we're wondering if there's any bellies in the main, if, you know, anything to address, and, and anything that is right away on the lead. Um, hopefully, we won't find as many issues with the Park Street one, but that should be happening soon. The core sampling, I think, is, uh, I think throughout last week, the core sampling.
They were, so.
So, um, you know, we're, we're working with Row, we had some hiccups with our Park Street project, we're not happy with some of the way the waters along the edges. Um, and we've had the discussion for months now about, you know, tackling the design differently this time around, um, we don't have many water issues, but, but only on the far east end, towards Mechanic on Moyer's, and we don't wanna create any new ones. So we've been trying to make our, our, our wishes known pretty forcefully with Row on that, to make sure it works out better. Um, DPW equipment, time to burst that bubble, so. Uh, last year, I, it's funny, when I pulled this memo up, last year was the same date with twenty twenty-four, March eleventh. Um, and I quote, "The street sweeper is quite old, requires a lot of repair and maintenance, we need it to replace it, and we'll look at used options, this could be around two hundred thousand." Well, in the last week or two, um, bell equipment is now part of a different group now, but there's still operators, still locally kinda owned. They got ahold of Rudy just last week, and said he has one, just kind of what we're looking for, and Rudy looked it over, and it's, it's just what we're looking for. And it's used, and only has, I think, eight hundred hours on it, maybe less, don't quote me on that, for one sixty-five. Bad news is, we have sixty thousand in our order equipment fund, because we spent two hundred and twenty-nine in loader here a few months ago, which is great, these are twenty, twenty-five year purchases. Um, and, and the unique, we need a, some way unique, um, that we call a cab over, like you see the trucks that don't have the, the conventional nose up front, they're straight up and down the front. We need that on our sweeper, because we get in and around, if you have a nose up front, you can't give them, especially the parking bays on the M twenty-four, to get in and follow those curb lanes back and forth, going down the streets, it's not that big of a deal, but we really need this cab over one, uh, and a smaller, so we can make those ins and outs on M twenty-four, cause they do the whole length of M twenty-four at least once a week.
Mm-hmm.
And it already, it, we got this one on loan, I didn't know that till this afternoon, around five o'clock, speaking to Rudy. Even he's done looking at this, uh, it's in, uh, Orion, um, or Auburn Hills, I'm not sure which, they said, well, just take it up and try it out. There was a couple of things they wanna talk to him about, but they were able to hit all twenty-four, they have it, so, the downtown at least. So, no matter what, we got something out of it.
It's a good trial.
And then the second bullet item I have is there, we have an old dump truck that is really getting hard, I mean, we, we were having to have custom-made fittings for a power steering pump. Um, it, it's old, and, and it's really, it's a workhorse in the snow season. And if it, you know, goes down, we're really upside down. And the, the note I put on there, it is, everything he's hearing from all the manufacturers is, the new emissions standards and equipment goes into place with the twenty, twenty-seven mile a year, will add twenty-five to thirty thousand to the existing price of those trucks from today to then, just for that simple change. They're obviously gonna go up probably five or six or eight percent each year anyways, but now they're gonna add twenty-five to thirty, thirty thousand more to those trucks. So we were already, yes, we, we threw out the idea of the sweeper last year, uh, this truck thing is really more important. Um, and, and we're looking at, you know, probably around two hundred thousand there too, by the time it gets all outfitted and things like that. Rudy doesn't have any hard numbers, he will have that later this week.
There goes your weed line.
So.
When do you have to have the dump truck?
By October one would be great, September one would be great.
Okay.
So next budget, but, and, and when I say, go back to the top, where I said we, we only have sixty thousand in our motor equipment fund. Well, there's a backstory there, Rudy and Donna both told me, and Rudy could stand up and ask them next month, he's gonna be here wherever our budget works out, he will be here as well. Um, and the story goes that eighty thousand dollars was removed and transferred out to the gen, the motor equipment fund for about ten years to help offset the general fund. So, if you math, there's about eight hundred grand that motor fund used to have, that they would, you know, regenerate now. I don't know all the details of that, I don't know how accurate that is, but Donna and Rudy both told me that same story. Maybe there was reasons for it, I'm not sure what those might be.
Wouldn't that have to have been a loan, and should be in the economy and that back then?
Technically, well, in that, your motor equipment fund, it isn't like a sewer and water fund, it's not an enterprise fund, I don't believe, or, or it's, it's, so, you don't technically have to. It's money that you move over there, um, that, a part of road funding money goes over there, so yes, you have to come for it that way, and that's how you get money into that. But you're also taking money out of the general fund into there, that's why they do work in certain areas of the village that aren't streets. We still charge the sewer, uh, I'm sorry, to a motor equipment fund, and money gets moved over based on the hours and the equipment used. So, yes, you could take the money out, you could, just as well we could put money back in from general fund into there. Uh, but again, that kind of explains why it's funded like it was, it, it had a healthy fund balance, but again, the village was, you know, had some tough debt, a lot of bonds years ago. And they did what they needed to do. So, I bring that up to say that while we, we're gonna need the truck, so there's gonna be some need to put some of our general funding back to the, to the motor equipment fund. We would really like to take advantage of a sweeper that is just what we're looking for, that it's not two hundred, oh, two hundred plus, but it's one sixty-five, we might be able to even get it down a little bit. So. So.
Is there any recoup on the old one?
We might get a thousand dollars and scrap out of that, it, it's, it's.
Not much.
The, again, they're spending so much time on it right now, like rebuilding a back part on the back of the dump, that's, they have to buy like channel iron and weld it and create it and put it on, because it just rusted away. We're spending maintenance and hours, man-hours, putting that thing together.
Oh, I meant the sweeper.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Just on the sweeper, so, whether there's any value to anybody else? No, would be my guess, I mean, if we got five thousand or ten thousand, I'd, I would be kind of happy and surprised, I guess, from what Rudy tells me, don't expect much of it. But, but we don't really know until you put it out there.
That'll be on next month's agenda?
Well, we're, we're gonna start having some budget workshops, and, and so we'll discuss it at that point, and Rudy said that he will have some harder numbers for the dump trucks later this week.
Do we have the one sixty-five for the sweeper?
In our general fund? Yes. I think we started off, our, our fund balance beginning of this year was around, oh, gosh, I'll bet the two point six or two point four.
And how long will belly equipment hold it for?
Uh, Rudy said, you know, I said, are we in a pinch pinch, he said, they've, they've been a long time vendor of ours, right, and, uh, he said, he, if it's something we're interested in, and he knows this one is kind of geared right for us with the cab over, not everybody wants that for one, uh, and it's just what we need, he, I'm sure we can work something out with them, you know, maybe we get it in a couple of months. I don't think we have the luxury of waiting until August or September, because, you know, they, they bought it and think, but. But the good news is, you know, the influx we got a few weeks ago was a hundred grand more than we thought. We have good ways to spend it.
They're all home stretch skirts in our water.
Yes. Um, and another thing I put on there was the CDBD projects, um, the, the abatement work on the old township side wrapped up this evening, I went out to see them, the clearance papers were theirs, we're done there. Um, hopefully, by the end of the month, the new doors will be in over here, we had a pre-construction meeting, took the open counter last week, so both of those should be moving along good, the Jordan way easement, we took care of that earlier. I jotted some notes down today as I was wrapping up, uh, I got a call, I think yesterday, the party shop was at, I don't know, Thirty South or Thirty Two South, somewhere, the old actual party shop that's sitting vacant. Um, gentleman bought it a year or two ago, was gonna open up a Vinnie's brunch or something like that, well, then he realized it's, it's a demo, it's a teardown. So I got a call from a demo contractor yesterday saying, hey, what do I need to do, I thought, you need to get us some serious plans, and he's gonna give us an architect, and I said, have you even been in the basement, he said, no, I've been in the building, not the basement, so, I think he's gonna get an eye opening. Hopefully, they stay on track, and hopefully they are still, they will continue taking forward steps, but we'll have to review that with our building official, there's, there's some serious concern about the basement removal or anything like that. And the debris and the dust control for M twenty-four, you know, but maybe have to put scaffolding up with some sheeting or just being something to keep something blowing into traffic as they're demoing it for a few hours. It's a small, single-story building, but, you know, you start ripping it apart with a loader, it, dust and, and debris starts flying.
Would we expect traffic delays or M twenty-four to?
I wouldn't think so, I think for the most part, they operate from the back, that's where the, the water and the hydrant stuff is in the back, for them to spray water on it, I, I would suggest that we build some kind of scaffolding out front with, um, you know, like snow fencing or something, that will keep debris from blowing on the sidewalk and/or into traffic even worse.
Would they block the sidewalks?
Perhaps on that, uh, the, it's depending, I'm not sure if the parking bay is right there in front of that or not, I'd have to see how much space is there, they might be able to put up a scaffolding that's five foot wide, and still have a couple of feet to walk around it without having to be blocked necessarily, but it, it would be down, you know, I don't know, a day. Though, especially the single, the, from the main floor, the first floor, um, the basement is more of a concern, that's like the other. Because they have to move the front and back down the foundations, and not necessarily the north and south ones where they bought other properties, those will probably stay right where they are, but you start moving everything around, there's concerns, there may be some shoring that needs to be done in the basements. So.
I'm sorry, did you say that there was a date for that?
No. No, it was the first call, a, a, a year or so ago, a, a gentleman walked in, and he hadn't given a job or anything, he asked about that, and I told him kind of the same story, I never heard from him again.
Okay.
Um, new call came in yesterday. And then, of course, the Hampton Block, um, the new owners, we had met with them a month or so ago, Kimberly couldn't be in two places at once, or she would have been there, um, Sarah Dan, you know, is the owners of it, and, um, they didn't get to run the demo event and stuff last year, because it was the middle of their busy season and stuff, and there was the winter, they would like to get it doored down in April. Kimberly's gonna look into the possibility, I mentioned it at the DDA meeting last month, about perhaps this really aligning with the DDA statute and DDA's mission of removing blighted structures in the district, so hopefully they can help with some financial help, but that's up to the DDA and their board, and they look at their budget. Um, but they would like to have it demoed in April before they get real busy, because I don't, I think if they don't get to in April, it might still be sitting there for things in summer, because they get off on job sites, and their equipment's, you know, out over ten, twenty miles away. And then the only thing, TJ was just, I know he's been, been hanging in with us, our fire suppression system has been, all the repairs have been needed, that were needed have been repaired, our, our alarm is fixed and everything else, so, once I get my report, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
Um, I haven't really helped much of an update, I gave you guys all the classes and different things I'm taking, I decided for the clerks to keep my accreditation, so it's a lot of classes I take during that conference and stuff, but other than that, that's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, any other things?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Sure. All right, council comments, Mel?
Vicki, are you ready to work the sweeping from the building yet?
No.
Just sorry, Mr. Soaz Beebe, um, I just, Happy President's Day, Happy Valentine's Day. That's all I got. Not yet, we haven't missed yet.
Happy students, St. Patrick's Day.
Um, my one comment is, um, I think we told the DDA we would get a number and a reason for them to, for the administrative line budget, is that gonna be, I guess, we should do that. Um, are you gonna be reaching out to schedule a budget workshop?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I have notes, um, I think, you know, maybe tonight I won't want to, you wanna look at some dates, um, do you wanna look at, so, we have to do it by our May meeting, so we have our April meeting in the meantime, then our May meeting, we're adopting. So do you wanna have one before our May meeting, and then one after our April meeting, and one after our April meeting, typically, you can get it done two, uh, two times, so, I guess perhaps, um, some ideas of what's, um, out there. The first, the first week of May, I'm going on that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um.
Can we talk about that now, Bob, if it's not on the agenda, or do we need to do it via, through the meeting?
We've, we've, we've covered a lot of things that are not on the agenda.
Well, we were listening, so, discussing. I see you're sitting there uncomfortably.
I was coming, I was coming out of my big Florida, uh, um, we can schedule dates.
Okay.
We, we just shouldn't delay the, the.
Okay, yeah, I think we get to schedule some.
So, uh, we could even have an initial meeting at the end, the last week of this month, perhaps, that's in two weeks, that'd be right before our April meeting, April meeting is early, because of April first, and a Tuesday.
Can I, can I talk, or is it okay if I have any question?
Absolutely not.
Okay, I'll submit it for next month. I'm just wondering from a timing standpoint, if you need to have it approved in May, we need to have it from a DDA standpoint, approved at our April meeting, so that would give us less than a week if you're approving it at the April meeting. Like whatever number that you're looking at? If that makes sense, that doesn't.
I, I would think too, you don't have to have your budget, well, the number of our combo, I guess, would be the best, if it's predetermined when we roll into our approval process, but you're, yeah, and then.
We can do everything else, but I think that's gonna dictate
Yeah.
what we're looking at as a whole, and I don't know that the board's gonna all say, yes, we're stamping this without knowing what the number is, and I think having more than six days to digest that would be helpful, but I don't know if that's realistic, I don't know how it works.
I think it is, I think if we meet in two weeks, um, and then that will be one of the first things we talk about, so we can solve that in the first budget workshop, and that will get a few.
Oh, well, that's fine, yeah.
Twenty-fourth, twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-six.
I am out of town the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, I will only be here that week, the twenty-sixth. I'm free.
Can't do one.
Thursday?
I can't do Thursday for.
Okay, okay.
Oh, Monday, the thirty-first.
I can't do that.
At the fifth Monday, we don't have those up, no, that's the fourth, okay. No, yeah, the fifth Monday.
I'm good, I can.
Yeah, works for me.
That's fine.
I'm good.
What time are we thinking?
Yeah, if you guys are, you're scheduled when you're available at your home, and at your families, and dinner, whatever.
Can everybody do six?
Yeah. So three thirty-one, six P M?
That works.
And then, the council meeting is on the eighth, right, April eighth?
Yes.
Okay. And then do you want to do the fourteenth? It's another Monday?
So that is, let's see. Second Monday, you guys are the third Monday, right? Yeah.
We're the third Monday, yeah.
Oh, I can't do that. Not the fourteenth.
I'm gonna be out of town, we can sort of, to like.
Oh, for the council meeting, for the council meeting, that week?
Yeah.
Joe, did you say you're out of town the fourteenth, fifteenth?
Nope, fifteenth I'm here, fourteenth I'm, I can't.
Okay, how about the fifteenth?
We have, that's, we don't have anything on the radar for planning commission, we haven't had it for a while, that would be a planning commission night, but I don't have anything coming down the pike at us.
Can always change that against the third.
And, and we, we meet over there anyways, we meet in the filter, we're just doing a budget workshop, we're meeting over there.
Oh.
Mo wouldn't be able to be in two places at once, but if we meet at six, and the council meeting, council meeting is at seven, so.
I bet.
Fifteenth this time.
So the fifteenth, so April fifteenth, that's it?
Tax day.
Yeah.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
Six, five, I guess.
Yeah, and then the DDA meets the twenty-first instead of April, and then also six P M. So we'll have met twice.
Before your, before your meeting, so that's good.
We'll have a.
Next time, will you be available those two days? Are you? Just checking.
And Rudy is aware that they're coming, I don't know, they're letting them in, so.
Okay. Great, everybody good with those?
Let's be really mean to Rudy this first budget meeting. Really throw some questions at him.
All right, um, with that then, I will move to adjourn at eight forty-two.
The board.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and aye.